Hi, everybody. Welcome to the Abington School Committee. Tonight is Tuesday, March 22, 2022. At this time, if we could ask everyone to stand and please salute the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, we'd like to see if there's any visitors that like to be heard. Moving on. If we could make a motion to approve the minutes of February 15. I'll make a motion. Okay. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, we have the principals' report. An update on grade eight participation with high school sports with Mr. Bourne and Mr. McCurtin and Mr. Serino.
Thank you. I was nominated to go first, so I'll try and cover as much as I can and then Doug and Matt can follow up. But before I get to the eighth grade thing, publicly, I did want to thank our athletic trainer. It's National Athletic Trainers Month, and we are very fortunate to have an outstanding athletic trainer. She does not get a lot of publicity. So I'm here, so I want to thank Ms. Reed. We're very fortunate to have her. So the eighth grade waivers. Just a quick review of the process. So last year, the school committee voted to allow eighth graders to participate. We then have to get league approval and MIA approval. So we're looking to see how the committee feels about continuing towards next year, so whether we should continue to pursue that option for eighth grade students or not. So once this group decides, we will have to apply for a waiver on a sport-by-sport basis with the MIAA. It's our district athletic committee that votes on that. You are required to prove a need for the eighth graders, so it's not just any eighth grader can participate. And the eighth grade participation, it's contingent upon need, but also it cannot displace any high school student directly. So what we mean when we say that is you can't cut a high school student for an eighth grader to take that spot. So that's just a kind of a quick overview of the process. In terms of how it's gone this year, I think overall, it's been very successful. So I'll use a few examples to illustrate what it has meant for our students. So our girls soccer team, starting in the fall, they were able to have eighth graders participate, which allowed us to have a legitimate JV team. So our practices, the varsity team could have a real varsity practice, and the JV team could have a real JV practice. Whereas if we didn't have those, I think it was six or seven eighth graders, they probably would have had to practice together. So the varsity athletes that are a little bit more skilled in advance probably would have been held back a little bit with their development and their experience. And the younger students would have been forced to practice with varsity, which probably would have been a little bit more advanced. So it probably would have struggled with that there, and it would have been combined into one team, which really would have changed the high school experience. As much as we love the athletic competition piece, being on a team, building those relationships, is really what drives the high school athletic experience. So it really helped students, grades nine through 12, by having the eighth graders be able to participate. And that's just one specific example. We had another situation with cheerleading. Because we had eighth graders, we were able to have a set, a third stunt group. So students during their practices, even if they weren't in the competition routine, they could have a group to practice with and build their skills. And we were actually able to, due to some injuries and some circumstances, students that were in that extra group and were able to practice and build their skills all year, due to injuries, were able to step in the week of the league competition and participate. Whereas in years past, we wouldn't have had enough students to build another stunt group, so those students wouldn't have been able to practice all year. And as a result, we probably would have had to pull out of the competition and in turn, not be able to qualify to go on to leagues and states. So the fact that we had that extra group for those kids to have that experience was great. In the winter, we had a wide range of experience. In hockey, we had eighth graders step in and play at the varsity level and compete and perform well. And we had a number of injuries throughout the year. And without the eighth graders, it would have been really dicey if we would have been able to field a team on some nights. I think we probably would have. But to go out there with 12 or 14 kids in a varsity game is concerning. So to have that extra depth was great. And in the spring, we've been able to have, or we hope to have, they just started this week, some sub-varsity teams that we haven't necessarily had in the past. So boys and girls lacrosse, we hope with the numbers, will be able to provide a true JV experience, so much what I described with girls soccer. And in baseball, we were able to have a freshman team. So instead of the six freshmen we have competing for a spot on the JV team or varsity team, and they may have struggled, or we, those six kids would have, if they made a team, a sophomore or a junior may have been cut. We don't have to cut those kids, so we can add the freshman team due to the, you know, six or seven eighth graders that we have. So it's a wide range of experience. I could go into much more detail on different ones. We have a number, a great number of students participating. We're up over 50 students, eighth grade students, in the spring, which I believe Principal Curtin says is about a third of their population. So it's a great, so in terms of the middle school benefits, it's great for them, but it's also benefiting the high school students. We have had some struggles, for sure, but they've been very minor, for the most part. The biggest area of the, I'd say, challenges more than struggles has just been learning from different situations. It's just communicating with a whole new school when, you know, there's, whether it's an attendance issue or a discipline issue. Just working with Principal McCurtin and his staff, just coming up with systems to track attendance, or working with the nurse on physicals, things like that. And we've been able to navigate it, I think, pretty well. And I think each season, we've gotten a little bit better and a little bit more comfortable. There have been times where certainly it's caused some jealousy with some high school students, and it's some tough situations where a younger student, an eighth grader, might be playing more than them. But those are situations that we encounter every year. It's usually just a freshman or sophomore playing over a junior, senior. So it just creates some more of those situations. But I can honestly say those situations have been very few and far between. And the high school students that I've spoken to and the eighth grade students I've spoken to have spoke glowingly about it. I know Ellie's here. She could certainly speak to it herself. But the students I've spoken to, ranging all grades, have said it's been, it's been great. The upperclassmen, the seniors, did say in the fall, it's a little weird. They seem really young. By the end of it, I think they really kind of embraced the opportunity to serve as a mentor. So that's my general overview. If anybody has any questions or has anything to add to it.
So I can't thank Mrs. Serino enough or the MIAA enough for allowing our students the opportunity to take our spring sports. As you said, we were just talking about the number of kids that are enrolled that are registered for sports in the spring and a third of the population of a grade level that in the past hasn't even had the opportunity. It's amazing. The experience that my students have had has been overwhelmingly positive. I know Peter has spoken a little bit about some difficulties that he's had, but luckily, those have not come to me. So I've had an overwhelmingly positive experience with this eighth grade sports. And I'm glad to hear that it's working out and accepted by the high school population as well. So, thank you.
And just to echo the similar sentiment from the high school, I think we are grateful for more students having opportunities to be part of sub-varsity teams, which has been fantastic for them and the eighth graders. I have not heard anything but positive feedback. There have been, as Peter mentioned, a few instances here or there, but by and large, it is a very positive impact. One positive impact we're hoping for, we haven't seen yet though, is when the current eighth graders become ninth graders next year, do they make a much more effective transition to the high school having built those connections? So that's something we're hoping for. We kind of won't know until we get them here and see how their experience is. But one other side effect that we're hoping is positive.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just a comment and a question. Super supportive of the eighth graders playing when needed. I think that's fabulous. Just curious to see, are we tracking the impact on the youth programs if we're kind of keeping in touch with the directors of those youth programs for those that rely on the eighth graders to round out the seventh, eighth grade teams? I'm assuming that we are and that overall, it's been okay and smooth. I know the spring sports haven't felt that effect yet, but...
Yep, so the spring, I can't speak to. I think that'll be coming up in the next few weeks. But in the fall and the winter, generally, it was well received. With cheerleading, I believe, in particular, they were questioning if they were going to have enough to run a team at that grade level, so provided an opportunity for those girls to cheer. Basketball was a little dicey just because of the timing of it. So the youth programs, they have their trials in October. And eighth graders obviously don't know if they make a high school team until after Thanksgiving. But we went through it and we did our best. We were in regular communication with them. I think basketball was the most challenging because of the timing. Youth football, we didn't end up having any football players participate, so it worked out for them. I have been in regular communication. I have not heard of any major concerns other than the timing around basketball. But we're kind of restricted to the MIAA calendar. So I'll continue to communicate with them as well.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, I think cheerleading, youth cheer, they weren't able to field a cheer team for the eighth grade, seventh, eighth graders for midget football. But they have a very, they had a very small team to begin with last year. And then the couple of girls that moved up, you know, I, it's just, that's the only reason why I think cheer didn't have a team. But other than that, I mean, usually, the program's pretty big.
Good.
One quick one, Peter. And then I have one comment. So do you know, like, no, you don't have to know off the top of your head, maybe you do. But how many high school teams? I remember last year, you gave us the example that you couldn't have girls softball JV because of, was it 14, give or take? Do you know how many teams you may have been able to have so far in the two seasons? And maybe idea of what the spring will be that you wouldn't have been able to without the eighth grade participation?
So we can go through it together. Fall, both soccer teams would have struggled to have a JV team. Freshman volleyball would be a third. The cheerleading team would have been tough to get through. Without it, we probably would have had the team. It just might have been a different experience.
Did you have the freshman baseball last year?
Freshman, in the spring, freshman baseball. JV lacrosse, I will say, we did not have last year. We played a handful of games.
Yeah, it's okay not to go. I was just getting, just to get a rough idea.
And in the winter, both basketball teams, we would not have been able to have a freshman basketball team have either for either gender this year.
Thank you. And I can imagine that, just thinking about this out loud, that most of the eighth grade experience would be positive from it. So I was curious, I mean, Ellie, do you like, do you mind just giving your impression as a high schooler, how you felt with the eighth graders there?
So I thought it was great, and I think that's like the consensus, at least amongst like the girls soccer team. We would have struggled having, not having a JV team.
Okay.
And we are like, we do stuff with like both teams still too, just like to like get to know everyone. And I think like, as far as like knowing the eighth graders this year and the kids that are coming in as freshmen next year and like could potentially be on the varsity team, like it was like a lot better for us to already know them, already have like tried out or like practiced with them sometimes.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Yeah, if I may, the, especially going back to girls soccer, because we know they work really hard. The varsity, the older kids take on a little sister. It's a fabulous program because they're there for each other, not just on the athletic field, but in life in general, which is just as strong. I mean, the role models, it's incredible. And we did see during the season that there were games that got canceled for our team because other towns couldn't field teams. So this was a great experience to be able to see more kids play because even with the games that were canceled, quite frankly, some days, they were okay with that. They needed extra time to rest or catch up on homework or whatever. And a big thanks to the families who were willing to take a leap of faith. It's not always easy to be that first eighth grader who says, "Yeah, I think I'm going to try out for insert sport here." So for the parents to allow them and for the kids to be brave enough to go out, it did. I think it was a good year, and I think there were a lot of good relationships. And just that organization, and some of these kids started to realize, "I have to work hard in my academics to be able to stay in athletics." It all kind of comes together, so.
Peter?
Mine is, I just want to recognize Principal Bourne and McCurtin and Peter Serino, all of the coaches, the assistants, the volunteers, and especially the players for winning the Sportsmanship Award. Again, people are probably tired. You're wearing a groove in the carpet going up to receive your award because you're up getting that award so often for Abington. But it's, it's the experience for our kids that count, and it takes everybody to get that award. And it's, it's an award that some communities never see or don't see very often. And I think, Ellie, you're going to go to the Sportsmanship?
Yes, Friday.
Yeah. Sportsmanship Award Ceremony, no, it's the...
So on Friday, there's the MIAA Sportsmanship Summit,
Summit.
Where we have a group of seven or eight students and a coach will accept the award on our behalf and also participate in a number of sportsmanship-based workshops. It's a full day at July Stadium, so we're excited.
Congratulations. And we've talked a little bit between Peter and I about him maybe coming back in May. Just that you'll have the full experience of the full year, and then the committee would be able to deliberate on what we want to do next year. Too early because we haven't gone through the spring sports.
Yes, and the hope is May opposed to June, just to give families some extra time. There were some families who already had vacations planned. And for the eighth grade families in particular, it comes as a shock to high school families that sports start two weeks before school, so the middle of August. And if we are making cuts, students do have to be present. So the earlier we can get that information out there, the better.
Can I ask a quick question for the middle school? I do, you know how like you have to keep up with certain grades to play athletics? Is that the same grading system as the high school? And with the high school, there's studies, there's bridge blocks, you know, different areas that you can actually do homework in and everything? Do you think, and I don't think there has been, but has there been any impact on the kids as far as the eighth graders, you know, by having, not having as much extra time as the high school students do? I know in eighth grade too, that there's like a lot of projects and, you know, assignments that they get that the high school, they still get it, but they just have more time to do it, I think.
Sure, so the grade eight students are bound by the same MIAA rules that the high school students are. The difference for our students is that the terms end at different points for trimesters and their semesters. So Mrs. Serino and the guidance department and my self and Assistant Principal Sullivan have a different timetable for making those determinations. For example, our trimester three just started, so some of our students did begin tryouts before any of those checks would have been done. But we don't believe anybody will be held accountable for not making a team for that. There has not been an instance where we believe a student has not had the opportunity for any extra work or any extra help. And in fact, we have after-school tutoring available three days a week through different programs that they can take advantage of if needed. And I'll just add that one of the things that was set up here was that, you know, athletics goes beyond the field. And the impact of grade eight athletics has gone past the grade eight athletes themselves. We've seen more students in grade eight attend evening games, be here after school. That itself led to study groups developing, some right outside these library windows, of students that were on teams and waiting to play or waiting to watch their friends play. So it hasn't just been the athletes that are impacted. It's been positive all around.
That's great. Anyone else have any questions, Serino? Perfect. I want to thank you all for coming tonight. And also to Mrs. Reed for National, what is it? National Athletic Month, Athletic Training Month? All right. Thank you. I didn't know about that. So appreciate your time and everything you do for us, Mrs. Reed. Miss Reed, sorry. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Oh, yeah, oh, you're up again. Okay, excuse me. Update on student activities and travel. And that is with Mr. Bourne and Mr. McCurtin. Thank you.
So I guess I'll be a little bit quicker than Mr. Bourne. For student activities coming up towards the end of the year for grade eight, we will hold our grade eight semifinals. This is a group of parents that are in the middle of a planning process for that. It's planned for June 10. Right now, the choice is to hold it at Riley Field under a tent. That was a positive experience for those groups who were able to do that before, but we are holding the Frolio Gym as a backup for the semiformal. And for student travel, we are anxious to get back into the game there. Grade eight traditionally has gone to Philadelphia. It's not possible for this year. The planning wasn't able to happen in time, but next year, we will be. So we've been in touch with the same travel group that I believe Abington High School is working with, Grand Classroom, to look at our Philly trip as a possibility. But we're also open to looking at other trips that might fit differently from a curricular perspective. For example, Washington DC would really fit well with our grade eight civics program. So we're going to take a look at all options that I plan on bringing back to you in August or September, a request for the grade eight trip for next spring.
Awesome.
So in a good way, we are feeling like we're back at full swing with our student activities. Let's say, the bigger events coming up on the horizon are the senior prom on April 14th and the junior prom on April 29th. And I think it's just for the, worth the committee knowing and the community to know, this is kind of a makeup senior prom. It is not the expectation that we will have a senior or junior prom every year. And for next year, the current juniors, next year's seniors will have senior reception at the end of the year. This year, seniors will also have a senior reception and that's slated to be at Riley Field. The kids asked for that, and so we're looking forward to that. That's coming up in April. Abington High School is also looking to get back into the domestic and international travel game, so to speak. The gap in time from when people were traveling, hoping to travel, in 2020 has bought us a little bit of space to figure out a bit of a pattern or cadence to travel because we know they're expensive, but really valuable opportunities. Ms. Daisy, who's one of our health teachers here, who has been a liaison with travel companies, has reached out to some of the firms, and we are looking at one firm called Grand Classroom because of really the very thorough schedules that they put together for our students. And so what we're contemplating is for the spring of 2023 is a trip for ninth and 10th graders to Grand Canyon. And then for the 11th and 12th graders, an international trip to Puerto Rico. I know it's not technically international. I think for the committee's knowledge, we're not feeling 100% certain about Europe at this time for obvious reasons. So I think just getting back into the game, we are going to choose those two domestic-ish international experiences. And then the hope is that we have a ninth, 10th grade trip each year and 11th, 12th grade, so folks can go, recover, save money, and choose their spots and know what's coming with some sort of regularity. So that's what we're looking to do at the high school. We're very excited to get into that because we know those trips can be the highlight and the learning experience for a lot of our kids.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you for the updates. We appreciate it. Thank you for coming. So next, we have the report of the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. That is Dr. Fodorovitz? Oh, no. Hi.
And under Dr. Fodorovitz's section, we've got Christina Park out of our guidance department.
Hi, everyone. I'm Christina Park, Director of Guidance. Nice to see you all. I first wanted to start off by just explaining who we are as a department and the counselor breakdown. So when students come to us as ninth graders, they're assigned guidance counselors based on their last name. And they'll typically have the same counselor all four years of high school. In case you don't know, there's been a long transition within our small department over the past year. Our Director of Guidance, Kristen Ferrioli, left at the end of last year to another school district to be closer to home. I was appointed the Director in November, and we've added Jessica Kasha to our staff. She's taken over Kristen's caseload. She's coming to us from California. She's been working out fantastic. Sarah McGinnis is also on our guidance staff. She was out on maternity leave for the first half of the year. She's now back. So we've been together as a unit for a couple of short months, but we've been getting a lot accomplished in that amount of time. I am super proud of. So that's our staff. We also have Danielle Gaylor, who is the guidance administrative assistant. She's phenomenal. She helps students with working permits. She also organizes our scholarships and organizes all of our meetings and presentations that we have coming in. A lot of the work that we do is one-on-one with students. It's very personalized. Every student is different. They have a unique set of needs. So a lot of the things that we do are one-on-one in our offices with our students. Some of the things that we cover are social, emotional, wellbeing, academic counseling, post-secondary planning, course selection, new student registrations, just a few. And just to note, in terms of the alphabet per counselor, that may be shifting a little bit. We are trying to make the caseloads equal amongst the three of us. So we're going to continue to have our same students, but we're looking to possibly shift with the eighth grade on the numbers of the alphabet a little bit just to make sure that we're equal across all three counselors. So that's just an FYI. In terms of strength, we are a very grand staff. Each of us has about 10-plus years of experience in the field, whether that's at Abington or other school districts. We have an ongoing commitment to the social, emotional, wellbeing and academic success of all students. An example of that is we are all members of the student support team. And that team meets weekly with administration, the school psychologist, nurses, the special education team chair, and the SROs. And we discuss students that we're concerned about on a weekly basis and try to figure out plans to best support their needs. Collaboration is another one of our strengths. As mentioned, we are in continuous communication with everyone within the school building, including teachers, admin, nurses, et cetera. We have ongoing communication with families and parents in addition to outside resources to help support our students' needs and post-secondary institutions, just to get more information for our students. Technology communication, we have a lot of information and resources to share out. So we try a variety of different ways to get that information out to families. So we use email a lot of the time. We've created a Canvas page for our grade 11 and grade 12 students to promote all of the resources that we have, that we want students to access. On those Canvas pages, we have how-to videos of how to use some of the college and career readiness tools that we want students to use and be familiar with. As mentioned, we do individual meetings, group sessions, parent information nights. So we try to use a variety of different ways to get information out to students and families. Areas of improvement, we want to continue to increase student knowledge of a variety of post-secondary options available to them. A lot of the students in Abington do go to college, but there is a group of students that choose not to go to college and try other careers. And we just want to make sure that those students know what options are available to them. So this year was the first time we invited Southeastern Technical Institute to come in and do information on all the trees that they have to offer. We opened that up to grades nine through 12. And it was a, students can sign up for it during Bridge Block, and it was really well attended. About 40 students signed up for it, and it was very well received. So we're hoping to invite them back in years to come. We've also coordinated with the Marines to set up a table at lunch. Students were able to go up and inquire about what it's like to be in the Marines, and we're hoping to invite the other services to do the same as well. So again, just giving students more options, making them aware of what their paths could be after high school is something that we're just going to continue to improve and educate them on. In terms of increased guidance information sessions during Bridge Block, this is the first full year of Bridge Block implementation. I feel like this is a normal year. Bridge Block started in the year 2019, 2020. And as we know, the world shut down in 2020 in March. So we didn't have a full year of Bridge Block. The following year, obviously with hybrid, virtual, in-person, it wasn't a normal year for us to conduct a lot of the information sessions that we would like to have. So it's been nice this year to kind of increase our guidance information sessions to our students. In years past, guidance only met with students in a group setting, one time per year per grade level. So we are hoping to increase that with the use of Bridge Block. And we've already done so this year for our seniors. This year at the beginning, we held college application workshops. So we had weekly college application workshops during Bridge Block. Seniors could sign up with guidance counselors and we would just help them with whatever they needed with the college application at the time. So again, it was weekly seniors signed up as needed basis. And we are looking to add another junior session for our juniors in June. We already met with them in January, but we just want to make sure that they're feeling comfortable and prepared going into the summer and walking into their senior year and knowing what to expect because those college application deadlines definitely happen faster than you know it. So that's just some of the things that we're thinking of doing in terms of Bridge Block. Continue to provide resources to students through multiple modalities. As I mentioned, we created a Canvas page for the junior and seniors this year. We found that a lot of students don't necessarily read a lot of the emails that we sent out. So we're hoping that Canvas is a better platform for students to access the information that we have available to them. So and again, we do the information sessions, increasing our Bridge Block time with students. And the parent information night is something that we are continuing to do. And lastly, continue to be educated on local mental health resources available to our students and our families. We're working closely with Dr. Robbins. He's helping us plan some professional development around supporting students with anxiety. So he's trying to organize someone to come in for our next professional development day. We also attended an information session from the Department of Mental Health early in the year that Mr. Robbins invited us to go to. So just continuing to be aware and educated on the resources that we can share out to our students and our families. So as mentioned, guidance goes out to curriculum and we have traditionally met with students one time per year per grade level. So in grade nine, it is an orientation high school. We talk about evaluation requirements, what a GPA is, academic eligibility, attendance policy, the importance of getting involved with the clubs and activities that we have to offer. Also, we just give an overview of the role of the guidance counselor, how to make an appointment with us, et cetera. In grade 10, we introduce them to a program called NAVYAS, which is a college and career readiness platform. Grade 10 students do a career interest inventory where they answer questions related to their interests. And at the end of the survey, it will produce a list of potential career options that match their interests. And it also connects those careers to potential areas of study. And then it links those areas of study to potential colleges that they may have that major. So it's a really great tool for students to use. In grade 11 and 12, we continue with the post-secondary planning. We give juniors a folder with all different types of resources available to them. Included in that is a packet of trade and other post-secondary options. We get into NAVYAS again, showing them a college application feature such as college searches. There's a great tool called Scatogram on NAVYAS program, which tells students if they're a safety target or reach school, so they're able to develop a well-balanced list. And again, we continue that in grade 12. We help the students create a Common App account, which is a website that subscribes with 700 colleges plus. So students definitely use that in their senior year. It saves them a lot of time because they just have to fill out one application and they can submit it to a bunch of different colleges. So we help facilitate and help them organize their common application accounts. And again, we focus on the NAVYAS college application features with them as well. In terms of events, I broke this down into things that we've traditionally done and things that we've added this year. We always take students, usually juniors and seniors, on a college fair, fail trip. We have two buses, so it's a first, first served basis. So that is something that usually happens at the end of September. Every October and early October, we host a financial aid night where Diane Place from Bridgewater State, she's in the financial aid office over there, does a wonderful presentation about all things financial aid, the FASBA, and the CSS profile. We organize the PSATs. So the PSATs are one Saturday in October. And then we have a results workshop in December. Once results are released to students, we invite all the students to seminar room, explain what the results mean, and give them resources to help prepare them to take the SATs. We assist with exam coordination. So one of our counselors is the AP Coordinator. So she is the one that is coordinating all of the exams. She orders the exams. She figures out rooms and times if doctors. So that will be taking place the first two weeks of May. We host on-the-spot admission days. We've had Massasoit come in twice this year and they've done on-the-spot interviews with students and offered them acceptance right there and then, which really gets a good vibe going down the guidance office. Students come out excited that they got their quality acceptance and that they have a plan. So we always love doing those on-the-spot admission days. Every winter, usually end of January, early February, we had a junior parent night. This year, we hosted it virtually. Traditionally, it's been in-person in the seminar room. We're open to doing both. I think it was more well-attended in the virtual setting, but maybe we think about doing a hybrid in the coming years. I'm not sure yet, but that's something that we will continue to offer. Course selection per grade level, so we are in the midst of course selection season. We've sent out communication to families via constant contact about the course selection process in early March. All of this month during Bridge Block, we've been meeting per grade level for students, explaining the course selection process. We're going to be wrapping up with our eighth graders. We're actually going to be meeting with them in person in the library at the last week of March. And then students will have up until April 14th to make any changes to those requests. And guys, it's going to send out another communication to families just to make sure that they're checking their student requests. And if they have any questions, they can certainly reach out to their students' guidance counselors in terms of course selection. Guidance counselors works closely with the school psychologist and health department every year for our signs of suicide program. We go into ninth grade classrooms and we have a signs of suicide program that we work closely with the health department and the school psychologist. We do a senior college decision day, so make firsts when seniors make their college decisions. So we usually have a party, so to speak, in guidance where we have a picture. They take pictures. They're streamers and it's just exciting to see where everyone's going and just get the buzz vote their life stuff for high school. And then we organize the scholarship awards night. As mentioned, Danielle Gaylor, the guidance admin assistant, she has been great in terms of coordinating all of the wonderful scholarships that this community has to offer. It's really, really wonderful. It's a lot of work, but she does a great job of telling us. New this year, as mentioned, we added the college application help during Bridge Block. We hosted Southeastern Technical Institute to do information sessions. We're also in communication with Porter and Chester to come in, possibly this year. If not this year, then maybe they can come in next year to talk about some trades that they offer at their institution. New this year, we had a scholarship information session for seniors during Bridge Block. So before seniors would come down and look at a binder of scholarships that we had in the guidance office. And we realized that a lot of seniors didn't come down to guidance to look at this binder. So we wanted to make sure that they knew that we had this binder, but also that we posted it on our Canvas page and we gave them the actual hard copy application to the town scholarship. So I'm hoping that more students will start applying to scholarships because there's so many scholarships that our students would apply to. We just want to make sure that they're getting that money because college is expensive and they can use it. We showcase local part-time jobs. So actually yesterday, we had Market Basket come in. They just opened a store in Hanover. And we had Market Basket set up a table during lunch and they had about 20 students come in and fill applications on the spot. And a bunch of different students also took those applications home to fill out. So that is something that we would love to continue to do if local businesses reach out to us. We're happy to support that and showcase if they're looking for part-time jobs for our students. And again, as mentioned, we've organized military branches to set up a table at lunch for our students to inquire. And that is guidance in a nutshell. I know I spoke really fast, so please let me know if you have questions. Yes.
I have nine, if that's okay. I'll be quick. I numbered them, so I won't forget them. So a couple of questions. One, a couple of yes. How much time would you say each student gets one-on-one with a counselor over the four years in high school?
Oh, it definitely varies. As mentioned, every student is different and has a unique set of needs. I don't know if I could honestly put a number to that.
But every student meets one-on-one for at least a little bit with their counselor?
Yes. And especially it ramps up their senior and junior years as we start planning their post-secondary planning options. Definitely.
Are we still doing the credit for life? I know that's not necessarily a guidance thing, but I love that.
We are. And it is, I believe, the first or second week in May. Every senior is eligible to attend as voluntary, but that is run by one of our business teachers, Kara Howell, and Ms. Daisy, who is in the health department.
Do we do, I know you mentioned a college fair. Do we do a career fair where community members come in to give workshops to seniors mostly or underclassmen if there's room? Do we ever have seminars where they can come in and learn the different jobs that are out there?
So a couple of years back, I know that there was an English teacher and I believe a business teacher did host a career fair in the school. It was pre-COVID. I'm not sure what year it was. And it was really well-received by the students and by the community. I don't know if that's something that we would explore in the future. But it was definitely, it was definitely well-received by those students. They loved it.
That would be great if we could look in. I don't know how much work that would take to do for this year, but something that maybe we could consider for the future. I think I know the answer to this question. College, students practice writing their college essays in English class. So they get practice doing that.
Yes.
Do we have someone to help those who want to practice their college interviews? I know not everyone does that, but do we have something set up, established for kids who want to get that practice before they go on those college interviews?
So guidance counselors have one-on-one done that, worked with students. A lot of colleges don't actually require those interviews anymore or much at all. But I've definitely worked one-on-one with a student during those college interviews. College Board has a great tool of like questions that college interviews would ask. So I definitely use the College Board as a resource to kind of go with that with students.
Awesome. So they could come to you guys.
Yeah.
Do we, I know that we have the financial aid planning session or information session. I know this is more a parent responsibility, I guess, but I'm hoping that it's, that a lot of different people are hitting it home to the kids. Do we talk to students about college debt as part of that college talk? Because I know there's so much that said that we guide, that guidance departments offer suggestions for where kids go to school, but that sometimes we talk about the school and not are they going to be able to pay off their debt, depending on which schools they pick? And that many wish that they had a little bit more guidance and talk about the cost. Do we do that talk?
So I think in our individual conversations with our students, I always hone in on it's important to have an academic safety as well as a financial safety. So we often make sure that students have a state school, a Massachusetts state school on their list, just as that financial safety. I know that in the personal finance class, Kara Howell focuses on student loans and the financial aid process with the students. Not every senior, unfortunately, not every senior takes that class, but she definitely does cover that topic as well.
Okay. Just a couple more. The junior parent night, can you remind me when you said that was? I was writing down another note.
It was, I think it was the first week of February this year. It's usually the end of January, early February.
Would we be able to do perhaps a sophomore night or earlier for juniors who are starting taking their exams earlier? Because I know that some would have done their SATs a little bit earlier if they, if parents who are new to the game knew about it. Could we get that information out to sophomores at the end of sophomore year or get it out a little bit earlier?
I think we can definitely open up the night that we have to all grade levels. I think that's something that we can look into. Certainly, I think, you know, the more, like, the more parents, the better in terms of getting that information out there. So that's something that we can look into.
Okay. And I love, even if it's not well-attended, you had mentioned that maybe do a hybrid and get something in person. And I put in a plea for that. I like having things in person, being able to ask my questions. I know from a lot of experience that when those meetings are on Zoom, they'll let people have the cameras off and sometimes it's questions go unanswered that would maybe be asked in person. And the last thing, the scholarship information session. You had mentioned that seniors aren't coming down and looking at that book and that we want to get them to apply for more scholarships. Could that be something that we get them to do in school? Could we offer time to students? Could we get them all to apply for a scholarship? Is that something that we could do?
Well, I think we handed them, we actually handed them the physical application for the town scholarship. So I'm hoping to see more students actually fill it out and do it. But we can look into other ways if that wasn't successful.
I know that some people would maybe, they would do it if it was a do-now, you're going to try this. So just something to think about.
And I'll just piggyback because I had a lot of the same questions. So thank you, especially.
And I'm piggybacking off of this.
Especially around the scholarships. I know that I'm a diligent reader of the, you know, the update every night that I get in my email. But as someone who's going through it with two seniors, as much information as you can push home to parents, like I happened to see about that town scholarship forum. And I was texting my kids like, where's the forum? Did you fill out the forum? Make sure you filled out the forum. Did you go to guidance? I think a lot of parents just don't get that information. They're not on the email list. So as many ways as you can think of to push that information out to parents too is super helpful.
Thank you.
My comment was, when you were talking about the interviews and you were saying it's something you talk, when they talk about the trades too, does anyone ever talk to our students about how to conduct an interview in general? Not just a college interview, but a job interview, a business interview? The act of looking at places beforehand, formulating questions, and being able to look someone in the eye and have the one-on-one that they need? Is that something we ever cover with our students?
I think that's something that's covered in some of the business classes that we offer to students. That's something that individually we work with students on, but not in like a big group setting.
Okay. And thank you, because I'm exhausted just seeing what you all do. That's a lot.
Thank you.
It's an awful lot. So thank you for all of it, really.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I want to agree with their sentiment as well. I love all your questions. And the career workshop, I think, is really important because not everybody goes to college. And I want to thank you because this is excellent information that we haven't heard in a very long time. So thanks very much for coming tonight. Does anyone else have any questions?
Thank you, Krista. I'm glad, I'm still learning the details of what Bridge Block is. My oldest is sixth grade, so I got wave week Wednesday. I know what that is. So I'm glad to see it's, that's a perfect opportunity to utilize it. And I'm very jealous of Common App. As somebody that's a handwrite them out as I'm dating myself. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
All right. So next we have the update on receiving the grant entitled Proficiency-Based Outcomes in Languages Other Than English with Dr. Fedora. Sorry about that before.
Good evening, everybody. It's really nice to be back. I can say it's just much better. So I have a few things to present tonight. And the first one is on the grant we just received. So I'm pleased to announce that we received from the state money to purchase the stamp assessment for our students at the high school and the middle school. And for the high school students, this is a test that they can take toward attaining the state seal of biliteracy when they graduate. This is great news. And it's called the Proficiency-Based Outcomes for Languages Other Than English Grant. And we got it in the amount of $12,800. So half of it we can use this year between now and June 30th to purchase tests for, or assessments for our 11th and 12th grade. It can be in Spanish, Portuguese, whatever language students take. It's predominantly in Spanish. And then some of it's also going to be used for our eighth graders. The other half of the money, the other 6,400, we can purchase more tests going into next year. So we're ready for next year. We can't do that till after July 1st. So we have two pools of money, one for this year and one for next year. So at the end of May, we're going to have, our juniors and seniors just took it. And we had about 51 of them that took it last week in Spanish, Portuguese, and French. And at the end of May, we'll have about 138 graders that'll be taking the Spanish stamp test. And this will help to determine a baseline going forward to grade nine for next year and also for placement in the Spanish classes. So it's a really great opportunity for our students that we just started last year. And we plan on continuing it moving forward. So we're excited. Any questions?
Just one.
Yes.
Will we use the results, will the department use the results to determine the proficiency targets for each grade? Have we started to talk about that?
We have started talking about that, yes. And it is a work in progress. And we would really like this year, like to start that in eighth grades who weren't prepared in the ninth grade. And as you know too, we started it in grade nine in the fall. So we can start having that baseline data, especially after the pandemic. We can see where everybody is at.
Do parents ever get to see the stamp, the results of the stamp test? Or is that just solely used in-house?
Nope. Last year, we sent those home, so we can make, I can double-check on that.
Okay. Okay.
I got them. I got them. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, are you still up, Ray? Update on the Abington Public Schools District Review.
Okay. So this, I presented last month on the district review that we're going to be having. So as you may recall, DUCY, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, has selected Abington Public Schools as one of the districts to have the district review conducted for this year. So again, this is a routine review that occurs every few years. And all districts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts do go through this, so we're up. So in a nutshell, again, the state determines if we are to be reviewed on six or three different standards. Not as the size of our district. They have chosen to review three of this, instead of the six. Usually your larger systems, the bigger school systems will have all six of the standards. Because our size, again, they're only going to do three. So my recent conversations with the state, it is very typical that they only do the three. And those are, on the student-centered systems, almost all districts get this. And this is where they focus on curriculum and instruction, assessments, and student support. The other, if you're interested, would have been under Governance and Administration, HR, PD, and Finance. But we did not get picked for that this year. Our, we are scheduled to, for the review team to visit our district the week after April vacation, which is starting on Tuesday, April 26th, and tentatively ending on Friday, April 29th. And I say tentative because we have to fit in a few different things, such as they're requesting a lot of documents. We need to give them schedules to observe classrooms. And that will be K through 12. It is not with preschool this year. They will also be conducting interviews of administrators, teachers, staff, students, and parents. And we need two school committee members to participate in the district review. So over the next few weeks, we'll be working closely with the state to provide documents, set up interviews, and schedule classroom observations. Usually the results will come in three to four months. So I think the thing we're looking for probably at this point, going, pushing going toward Wendy, would be looking at two school committee members to be a part of that district review.
Okay. And then with the review, do they have to attend the, the classroom sessions that DUCY goes to as well?
No, you would just, it's basically about an hour interview.
Okay.
Where probably two people would be in the same room, both of whoever's picked for about an hour of interviews.
Okay.
With them.
And then who comes from DUCY exactly?
So they're changing it this year, and it's a little bit new. They've actually outsourced, outsourced it to a company called AIRS. And I'm sorry, I don't know what it stands for off the top of my head, another acronym.
What are the initials of AIRS?
A-I-R-S.
That makes sense.
I actually was thinking of a Y in there, so.
So they're going to be, they're an outside consulting firm, like a research firm that looks at the districts. They'll be doing the interviews. They use something called Class Protocol for Classroom Observations. And although the, DUCY is involved, I don't know to what detail yet. I'm still working out all the details of that.
Okay. Does anybody want to volunteer for this?
I don't mind doing it, but it's whatever you need.
Okay. Anyone else?
If people, other people want to do it, that's fine.
Okay.
Definitely, if they're more experienced.
We don't need to know. Sherry, can I just ask a quick question? So regarding going into the schools, I don't know the MCAS schedule, but is that impact, like, I don't think you want people going through, usually when MCAS are taking place, correct?
So originally, they were going to come in a couple of weeks, the week of April 4th. And when I spoke with them, I asked if we could actually change that week because we have Woodsdale and Middle School that are going to be conducting MCAS. So the best window that we had, they actually wanted to come April break. I said, nobody will be here. So they wanted to.
Brilliant. There's so many things you could say to that.
She said yes.
So they wanted to come the Monday after April break. And I said, how about the Tuesday? Let everybody come back and get adjusted. And we actually have a window there where we don't have MCAS testing.
Okay. I wasn't sure. I know Woodsdale's off, third grade anyway, off the top of my head. I don't even think I know the middle school's down pat. So I just wasn't, it was more a question on that.
Thank you for asking.
That time of year.
It is that time of year. We're working around it with them.
Okay.
So thank you.
Thanks.
Can I ask you one question? With, you had said that they had three standards?
Yep.
Did you explain all three or, because I, I wasn't sure if that first one was lumped all in one or if that was the three broken down? The student-centered system with the curriculum, instruction, and student support?
Yep. So the three sections under student-centered systems are curriculum and instruction.
Okay.
The second one is assessment, and the third one is student support.
Okay. Thank you. I'll talk about it further with the crew, but as of right now, it's probably these two unless anything changes. And we'll get back to you.
Sounds good.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you guys for volunteering.
Any other questions on that? So next, we have the consideration of 2022 to 2023 school calendar with professional development days.
Can I tee this one up?
Of course.
So we don't need a decision tonight, but it's good to have this on the agenda a couple of times because once you set it and you publish it for the community, people start making plans around it. So it's, it's good to bring it up a couple of times. If you want to decide on it tonight, that's completely the purview of the committee. I did the research on the use of Good Friday. Dr. Fedoraz helped me with that. Do you want me to tell that? Do you have that? Do you want me to?
Either one is fine, go for it.
So in the North River Collaborative, the schools that do not go to school on Good Friday are, basically all, all of them, except for Stoughton. The rest of them do not have school. A survey was done where 60, of, of the staff, which we were asked to do, and 63.4% of the respondents would rather not have school that day. I was also asked, since our last meeting, to ask Stoughton what their attendance is like that day. And they, I believe they told me that the student rate of absence is 1% and the staff is five, that, that having school on that day has not been a problem for Stoughton. There, there was a concern that our staff have kids that go to school in these other districts that don't have school on Good Friday, so they would not be able to report. But that's not been the Stoughton experience. I think that's what I was asked to provide. And Mrs. Minahan has an alternative calendar that has Good Friday as a school day for people to look at should they choose. And it's basically what you have in front of you now with.
One day.
School on Good Friday and one less day at the end of the year. I'm going to instill your Good Friday thunder.
Can I just make my comment while we're considering? Shall I wait?
No, go right ahead. I'm sorry, I was.
So I know that start, so when we talk about with teachers having students, having their own children in different districts, all of those things completely make sense. I just always, I'm, I'm going with what seems to be Abington's kind of baseline for decisions. And if we base decisions on what's best for our students' education and maximizing their learning experience, then to me, there's no denying that a day in March or April is worth way more than a day in June. And different school districts have different start and end dates, different PD days. So there's always going to be something that's a little different. Students have February vacation, usually a couple of snow days in February and March. April vacation, Memorial Day. And on years that we extend into the twenties of June, we have June 19th off as well to break up the spring and help them get to summer vacation. So I'd like to still consider removing Good Friday from the calendar again, thinking about what's best for students and maximizing their learning. But I recognize that we might not be ready to vote on this. Just kind of brought it up this year. I'm completely okay with waiting on it, but it's something that I'd like to consider, especially if the state is going to continue to say that we can't do distance learning on snow days.
I believe they will likely continue to say that.
Yeah.
I believe they will likely not count that as time on learning. The majority of the reason behind that is not all school systems are able to provide a distance learning program. It's an equity issue for the, for the state.
I agree with everything you just said, that we have to look at Abington's students. I don't know how, how did the rest of you feel about that? Do you want more time to think?
I would like, if you think we could still set it in April and not be too far behind when we normally do, if that's okay? Yeah, it's like an alternative that I thought, and this would be, I mean, so we set the calendar every year. It's not set for, but I think a year like this year where Good Friday leads into vacation, maybe it's one where we would keep it. And then if it's a year where it doesn't lead into vacation, it's like a standalone three-day weekend, like next year is a good test case, it's maybe a day where they, we don't have it off. Because it's not, I mean, it's not the start of, I know if it starts, if it could start a vacation, it could, if people are going away or, or something to that effect. It's just more food for thought than anything right now. I know we're only looking at next year anyway. So I would ask to wait a month if we could to vote on it. But whatever everybody else wants to do is, I mean, I'll vote on it if that's the decision, so.
Is that for like read more research or?
Yeah, probably just kind of trying to talk to people more and seeing where they come across. Peter's Stoughton information isn't what I was expecting to hear. So that's some of it too. So just kind of digesting it some. And maybe just talking to some people myself, so. I think that's all.
Anyone else? I honestly don't really have an opinion on it. I mean, you know, I can see both sides of it, so I'm fine if the rest of the committee thinks, or if we do it year by year, that's fine too, but.
I'm happy to wait. I, I would be interested to see if we made the decision to have school on Good Friday, how many other districts would potentially follow suit in the next few years?
Right. I agree with that too, definitely. All right, so why don't we wait until next month?
Can I ask one more question?
Of course.
We didn't, I didn't realize when I came in. I know for this past year, the day after Halloween, we had the teacher in service. And I had a lot of people say, yay, we loved the kids not having school the day after Halloween. And then Danielle heard the complete opposite, like that was a train wreck. Was there?
Really?
Yes.
I've always loved it, not having it.
So that was.
As a parent, it drove me crazy.
Having the day after.
Oh, as a parent, I understand why teachers feel differently. Absolutely can see both sides of it. But as a parent, for some reason, that always kind of worked to me.
Well, that's funny.
Is November 1st a lunch day? Yes, okay, that makes sense.
It, well, yeah, that, I was looking up to figure out why we would have gone, I don't know. I just didn't know if anyone had any strong feelings on that one way or the other.
On what? On, I mean, I think it's more, oh, I love having November 1st, the professional day. But it was, I think it's, and on a day it's not, I think it's tough because with Beaverbrook now being designated as.
The polling states.
Used for elections and, on, on the even years anyway.
Right.
On the odd years, it's not really an issue, I don't think. But on the even years, it might be tough.
Yeah, especially where Halloween's on a Monday. And then, you know, it's just, it makes it difficult.
I can guarantee you, no matter what you do, not everybody's going to be here.
Of course.
Really? You don't say.
Of course. So we'll think about this more and then, you know.
Thanks.
Reflect with Sherry and, and Peter and then we'll come back to this next month?
Yeah, definitely. I wouldn't want to push it further than that anyway. So yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Makes sense. Absolutely. All right, so we're not going to make a motion tonight on that, okay? And so next up, we have the Chester Mallet Outstanding Teacher Award update.
Okay. So it's that time of year again, and I'm excited to announce that the school committee's Chester J. Mallett Junior Award is now open for both teachers and educational support person nominations. This award is presented to a teacher and an educational support person who by his or her performance has demonstrated the willingness to assume responsibilities and perform deeds well above and beyond those normally expected or exceeded. So things like great examples, dedication, perseverance, and commitment to helping students. Forms are available online through the district homepage. And announcements have been sent by the district and all of the buildings. So please check your emails. It's probably in there somewhere, or you can go right to the district homepage. And it's toward the bottom for one of the links. And like last year, we switched it over, so now it's all online and not paper copies. And so this way, everybody can kind of do it in convenience in their own home. Nominations close on Sunday night, April 3rd at midnight. The committee will meet in mid to late April, and the award recipients will be announced on Teacher Appreciation Day on May 3rd. And I just kind of want to give a shout out to all of our teachers and support staff because we have an absolutely dedicated, amazing teacher and staff body here for our students. And this is just so worth to have the nominations available. Students, parents, please submit your nominations for these teachers and educational support staff.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Fedoraz. We appreciate it. Thank you for coming tonight. I do have a question, actually. With the guidance department update, it's more for Peter, I'm sorry. Was that part of Sherry or was that part of, you know, like the last couple of months, we've had music and the science department and everything come? I noticed though, we didn't have health and we didn't have like art. I mean, I don't want, if we had music, I don't want to have.
Coming to a theater near you soon.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly that department presented tonight, like Kelly did.
Excellent. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so next up, we have the report of the superintendent of schools, Mr. Schaefer.
So Reed's Collaborative provided me a video. And what might, what might make sense, if it's okay with the numbers, do you want to, I can set that up while we start Felicia's section? Or you can, it'll probably take me a little bit longer than it takes you to vote me to the North River Collaborative.
I'd be happy to. Is that okay?
Of course. All right. So we're up at budget update from Felicia.
Thank you. I, I have a budget update for, for tonight. And I'm happy to report that we have a consensus budget with the town going into our April 4th town meeting. I'd like to thank members of the town's finance team, Scott, Sonya, and Andrew, the finance committee, this committee. And what you have in front of you is the increased by major category page. The only change that you'll see in our, in our proposed budget is the $200,000 that was originally in the budget for laptop replacement has now been put as an item to be funded by the town's capital plan. So going into, into town meeting, our budget to be voted at town meeting And if you would like, we can make a motion tonight to vote our number. We could, we'll still meet before town meeting, but we can vote tonight to have that as our town meeting, school committee voted number.
Okay. Can I ask you a quick question about the circuit breaker?
Yep.
When do you expect to get the news on that?
When the state budget is established. It won't be less than 70%, so it would free up other, if maybe free up other money within our budget. I don't anticipate it being below 70%.
What did we get last year?
75. Well, it's like 73.8 and then at the end of the, for this year. And then at the end of the year, there's a separate account that's part of Circuit Breaker called Extraordinary Relief. And once that's used or not used by other districts, that money is reallocated out to districts. So it was, it's, I think right now it's sitting at like 73.8 and then it'll probably be at 75. But we won't know that till the end of the year. And we won't know what next year's circuit breaker is until the state has a budget.
Any questions?
No, I said, put it through and out.
All right. Is everyone okay with doing the vote on this? Okay. So would anyone like to make an, a motion to approve the budget to go into town meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you.
I think you want to finish it off?
Yeah, I'll just, I have two other small things. Yeah, I'll just, I have two other small things, if that's okay.
Of course.
Yeah, is that right?
Of course, yes.
So I mentioned the capital, town's capital plan. Right now, moving into town meeting, we have two items. We've submitted a list of items. The town is planning to move forward to town meeting, two items. The first is the $200,000 in technology, and the second is the money for the painting, de-letting and painting of the Frollo School. And the other items will remain on the town's capital plan, and we just engaged with UMass Boston to do a whole town, long-term capital plan. So all these other items were on that.
Great.
And the other item that you don't have to vote on, but I wanted to give you an update, is a number of years ago, we had a town meeting article for $85,000, I believe it was six years ago, when we, five years ago we opened this building, for $85,000 to replace the garaventa at the Frollo, which is the chairlift that allows someone to get up to, ADA to get it to other floors. We've spent four years trying to get the garaventa approved, or to get plans to get it approved. And there's a number of reasons why, including the height of the stairs isn't high enough. There's a beam that goes through one of the staircases. So there's a multitude of reasons why we couldn't get plans to move forward to replace the garaventa. In speaking with the town manager, and like, we have to do something here, he suggested using the $85,000 that was set aside for the garaventa to instead go out to design and bid a ramp that will go into the main doors at the Frollo. So it would be bricked in, it would look like it was part of the building, you know, not part of the building, but it would be a ramp that would be looking from Washington Street, would look appealing looking at the front of the Frollo. And it's estimated that it won't be the entire $85,000 to get it designed and bid. But that would be the first step, and then in a subsequent town meeting, once we have a budgetary number, we would ask town meeting to fund the construction of that, that ramp. That would make the middle floor of the Frollo fully handicap accessible.
Excellent.
That, got it.
Any questions on that?
Just because that's going to say, I think the way it's going, I haven't seen the warrant, but I believe it's going to say by, it's going to be a by the school committee warrant article, because it's changing an old, the use of an old article.
Okay.
Which that money's still sitting there.
Still sitting in the county. Yep. It's no new money.
Okay.
It's just changing how it's going to be.
Hopefully they say that, too.
I think it says to transfer the unused balance. Yeah, it says transfer unused balance.
Okay. So would anyone like to make the motion to submit for annual town meeting a warrant article to see if the town will transfer the unused balance of funds from 2017 ATM Article III Exterior Lift Frollo, the amount of $85,000 in order to pay for the survey design and bidding of an ADA AAB accessible ramp at Frollo, and anything incidental or related thereto, or take on any other action relative thereto.
You should make that motion after all.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure you were going to ask what AAB was.
AAB?
Yeah, and it's ADA AAB accessible, accessible ramp.
ADA, I know what ADA is.
What is AAB?
Architectural Access Board.
Oh, wow.
It's the state agency to make sure that building.
When there's legal documentation, I just.
They know what they're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Back to Peter.
So this is the video that Reed's is sent to help educate people about the request that they're asking the committee to consider. They're asking all committees, members of the collaborative, to consider this capital plan, this reserve fund for capital improvements and maintenance. Got nice music.
Hello, I'm Dr. Teresa Craig, Executive Director of Reed's Collaborative. I have been the Executive Director for the past 11 years, and this is, hi, I'm Lindsay Albernass. I'm the Business Manager for Reed's Collaborative, and I've been there about three years. I want to thank you, the school committee chair, the members of the school committee, the superintendent, and the community for the opportunity to present this information via video. As we come to you with this request regarding our capital plan, I would like to provide a brief overview of Reed's programs, services, and locations. Reed's Collaborative was established in 1974. Your district is one of 18 member districts that form Reed's Collaborative. As a member district, your superintendent is annually appointed as a member of the Reed's Board of Directors. The Board of Directors meets six times per year or more. Various subcommittees meet throughout the year. The special education administrators from member districts meet three to four times per year as an advisory group, and engage in work as specific program subcommittees. Reed's is one of 25 collaboratives across the state of Massachusetts. Reed's provides many services to our 18 member districts, and provides services to an additional 45 districts in southeastern Mass and beyond. Reed's programs include Reed's Academy, which serves students with disabilities that impact their social, emotional wellness. Reed's Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program, which serves students ages 3 to 22 who are deaf or hard of hearing. We also provide teachers of the deaf, educational audiology, and speech and language consultative services to students within their districts. The Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program contracts with early intervention for specialized services for infants and toddlers with reduced hearing up to age three. Reed's Clinic provides comprehensive diagnostic and evaluation services, including psychoed, neuropsych, risks, and personality assessments by our clinical psychologists, CAPS, and educational audiology evaluations by our audiologist, speech and language evaluations, and other assessments by our licensed professionals. Reed's District Services provides a variety of specialized personnel within districts, such as speech and language pathologists, OTs, PTs, APEs, school psychologists, school counselors, all for short and long-term solutions, and also our newest family success partnership counselors. Reed's provides professional development, such as mentoring, educator evaluation for administrators, mental health and trauma, and other specific topics on request. We have eight classroom locations in Norton, one classroom at Bristol Plymouth Regional Vocational Technical High School, one classroom at West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School, and the two academy schools located in Middleborough, which we will refer to in this presentation. As you can see, we are very proud of the services we provide to the students, families, and staff of our member districts. Reed's Collaborative is seeking to formally establish the reason and limit for the Reed's Capital Reserve Fund through approval of member school committees. Reed's Collaborative is requesting that each member school committee vote to approve, first, the reasons for the capital reserve, and second, the limit on the balance. The reasons for the reserve, as approved by the Reed's Board of Directors, are maintenance and improvement of Reed's properties and leased properties, to provide funding for payment of the lease for Reed's Academy Public Day School location during periods of time when enrollment is below expectations, and to prepare to purchase the location of the Academy Public Day School to eliminate the expense of a lease beyond 10 years. The limit on the balance, as approved by the Reed's Board of Directors, is $4 million for the reasons identified above. Please refer to the Capital Fund Reserve Regulations, which are included in your handouts on page one. I'm turn it over to Lindsay.
Reed's Collaborative currently has two capital fund accounts. The Capital Maintenance Fund is established by the board on January 24th, 2013. The intent of the fund is to provide small annual funding to be used for larger capital maintenance projects to maintain our current facilities. The second is the Capital Building Project Fund. This fund was established by the board on June 7th, 2018. The intent of the fund is to provide for a new or renovated facility for the Reed's Academy program K through 6 and 7 through 12. A feasibility study indicated that the existing facility would be costly to renovate and expand as needed. After discussions with various financial institutions, the financing for construction of a new building on site was not feasible. I would like to note that collaboratives in the state of Massachusetts are not entitled to building project funds through the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The current combined balance held in these two funds is approximately $1,180,000. The two Reed's Academy schools, pre-K through grade 6 and 7 through 12, opened for students in a newly renovated location on September 7th, 2021. This relocation provided an opportunity to expand available placements to include a DESI-approved preschool classroom, which is already enrolled with students. The new schools have a shared wellness center slash gym, a cafeteria and kitchen, designated classrooms for art, music, vocational programming, and makers place slash libraries. There are outdoor spaces for field sports and basketball. There is playground equipment that is appropriate for elementary students. This space is welcoming and an equitable learning environment for students with disabilities who are referred for placement at Reed's Academy. In planning specifically for the next five years, Reed's Collaborative Board of Directors has approved a five-year capital improvement plan that encompasses both the existing Capital Maintenance Fund and the Capital Building Project Fund. The five-year capital improvement plan on page one of your handout prioritizes improvements to existing facilities, while also allocating funds to provide financial support to purchase or continue to lease 44 Bedford Street for students in Reed's Academy. The details of this plan over the next five years do not require a school committee approval, but are provided on page two of your handout to support the reason for the Capital Reserve Fund and the limit on the balance.
This approval requires action by you as a school committee members of Reed's Collaborative and a signature of the school committee chair. Reed's Collaborative is seeking to formally establish the reason and limit for Reed's Capital Reserve Fund through approval of our member school committees. Just as a reminder, Reed's Collaborative is requesting that each member school committee vote to approve, first, the reasons for the Capital Reserve, and second, the limit on the balance. The reasons for the reserve, as approved by the Reed's Board of Directors, are maintenance and improvement of Reed's properties and leased properties, provide for funding or payment of the lease for Reed's Academy Public Day School location during periods of time when enrollment is below expectations, and to prepare to purchase the location of the Academy Public School to eliminate the expense of a lease beyond 10 years. The limit on the balance, as approved by the Reed's Board of Directors, is $4 million for the reasons above. The 18 member districts of Reed's Collaborative have provided consistent support and vision over the past 47 years. School committee members and superintendents have sought to ensure specialized intervention for the students with disabilities who require services provided by the highly qualified staff at Reed's Academy, Reed's Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program, Reed's Clinic, Reed's District Services, and within the many specialized services provided to school districts. Thank you for taking this additional step to secure an equitable learning space for the students attending Reed's Collaborative now and in the future. Thank you.
Could I just give you a little bit of backdrop information? So as was stated, Reed's Collaborative services students with disabilities, they, from the towns that are members. They've been dealing with a facility that's been inadequate for decades, a couple of decades. They are not able to access School Building Authority money the way other public entities are, and that's wrong. And they've tried, and we continue to try to tell the state that that's unfair, and they should be able to, but that, we haven't been able to move that needle. Rather than waiting for that to change, because that would actually take the legislature to make that change, and we all know how that goes, they've started this fund, and they've already got a million dollars in it. And as a public entity, they have to make sure that they follow the procedures and protocols of making, of the appropriate votes, so that the right checks and balances and approvals are in place. And there's a million dollars in it now. There's also a piece of property that is owned by the collaborative that they want to sell. When they sell that property, there's no place for that money to go. The balance of that fund is going to go up. And they're currently in a building that they're leasing. This fund would help them pay for those, they'd take the lease payments out of it, they'd take maintenance of the facility out of it while they're there, or other facilities. But they hope to actually grow this over years into something that they could purchase the building that they're currently in, that they're currently leasing. But they can't have this account without the member district and school committee's approvals. So that's why they're asking for this approval.
Any questions?
I got one quick one. How does this, if it does at all, impact our budget or money from the town of Abington?
So Abington and all of the member districts pay money for the services that are provided.
Already?
Already. If there are, if there are extra monies available at the, you have to balance your books every year. And there's always some money left over at the end of the year when you've balanced your books. Otherwise, you're in a deficit, and then you've got.
They have extra money, you mean, or like?
They have, they have historically had extra money. Not extra money, but.
I guess you mean the books, you mean.
Right, after you pay your bills.
You mean their books or the, our town's books?
Their books. Yep, good question. Their books. And then, at the end of the year, districts can vote whether that money goes back to the member districts, or the districts can vote to put that money into that account at that time, whatever fiscal cycle or year that might be. That comes up annually.
Okay. Thank you.
No, good questions.
So if I'm getting this right, then it's not money that we're actually taking out of our budget necessarily. Anything that might have been returned to us is just staying.
Could, it could, if that's the decision at that time. I've lived through bad budget cycles, where that money has to come back, because it saves people's jobs who need to stand in front of kids. And there are other budget years where you know you're going to make your numbers a district, and, and they keep the couple of thousand dollars, just to give you an order of magnitude. They keep that money.
Do we or you have the ability to adjust yearly, if, I mean, if it was a bad, if we said yes now and it was a really bad year, like you just described?
So right now, you're just voting for the establishment of the account.
Okay.
And then every year, there's a vote in terms of what happens with any additional funds at the end of the year.
Okay. Thank you. That clarifies.
That's not a decision for Abington. It's a decision for member districts.
It's the decision for member districts, and it's, it's a democratic process. The majority of the directors, which I'm one of the directors, everybody gets a vote. And then that's what happens to the additional funds at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
So I suppose my question would be this, then. What would the compelling reason be for a district not to vote for it?
I would, I would recommend that you please consider supporting this, because they have no other way to improve their facilities for the kids that they serve, including our kids, and they've done it very responsibly and thoughtfully. So.
I know some educators who have taught there, and those kids and the teachers deserve, they need and deserve our support.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
No, that's all.
Okay. So at this time, I'll be looking for a motion to, for a reason, I'm going to copy from, a reason for the reserve and limit of reserve as presented by the presentation.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just second vote on the amount.
The, to the, actually, can you amend?
Sure.
I think she said it.
Yeah.
It would be twofold.
It was twofold, yes.
Can I?
I thought I read, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
No, 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 that's all right. I kind of put them together, and then I think the limit.
Did you say $4 million?
No, I did not.
$4 million in there, into that motion.
Okay, so should we take back that motion?
Let's.
Or just amend it? Okay.
If we're going to do it, let's do it properly, I suppose.
Okay. So that's all right. So we're going to take back that motion. All right. So we're going to then ask for another motion. And that is for the reason for the reserve and the limit of the reserve for $4 million. No, this is different.
That's different.
Thank you. Hold on, I got it. To approve the reasons for the Reed's Collaborative Capital Reserve Fund as presented, and the limit of 4 million on the amount held in reserve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Good job.
Sorry, I thought you were doing it as a two-part earlier.
That's sticky. I didn't pay attention to that, and it gave me, yeah. Perfect. So now, onto the next part of this. There's actually two other parts. 2022 to 2023 North River Collaborative Board of Directors, we'd like to see if we um, we'd like to see if we can make a motion to appoint Peter, um, Schaefer to serve as the Abington Public Schools representative again on the Board of Directors, um, and.
Reading.
And so we're going to do the Reed's and North River Collaborative together, so you can be a director at both.
Lucky.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Great.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for representing us. You don't have enough to do. But you're, it, it's best to have the superintendent know so much as being, uh, the director, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Where are we now? Do you have anything else to add for informational items?
No, I think they covered it.
Okay. Um, so new business and establishment of next school committee meeting. Um, so, so our next meeting date is April 4th at 6:30 prior to town meeting. Um, and then town meeting is at 7 o'clock at, uh, the auditorium. And then April 26th is our regularly monthly meeting at 7:00 PM, uh, for some informational items. The.
You said that already, yeah.
You've got everything.
Can we just, um, give a shout out to the High School Drama Club for a fabulous show? The cast and crew of Lockdown did a tremendous job, uh, especially the Q and A session at the end. It's not easy to sit there and take public comments and questions, and I think they all did a fabulous job.
Thank you, congratulations, everybody. Um, some dates to remember, Thursday, March 31st is In Service Early Release Day. Monday, April 4th is the annual town meeting. Uh, Friday, April 15th is Good Friday, and all school offices and buildings are closed. Monday, April 18th is Patriot's Day, all school offices and buildings will be closed. And Monday, April 18th through Friday, April 22nd is spring vacation, so we will be, um, closed for regular school. And Saturday, April 23rd, our town elections.
Should be the 30th, I made a typo there.
Oh, April 30th is, yes, so town elections is, um, Saturday, April 30th.
Yep, my fault.
No, that's usually what, 8 to 6?
Um, 8 AM to 6 PM, yes.
8 to 6, and it's going to be at Beaverbrook. Perfect. Um, all right, so if anyone would like to make a motion to.
Adjourn to executive session?
Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn to sa-, executive session?
Not, and not to return.
And not to return to public session.
My question.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have to roll call?
Do you have to roll call?
For executive?
Yeah.
Let's make a roll call vote to go into executive session?
Yes.
Yes, 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 and yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have executive session?